Uh, so, uh, I don't know who that is.
So I've got in the room Commissioner, they've got, um, Tammy Squires, who will be presenting as well as Kirk Bench, who's listening in for his item. That is it so far.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and open the meeting. Um. We'll go ahead and I have right in front of me the proposed agenda, so. First, I guess, uh, evocation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone offering? An opening prayer?
I'll do it.
Okay, we've got Commissioner Adams.
Okay.
Come on.
No, you can go ahead. Actually, we'll pick it up.
Dear Father in heaven, as we come before thee today as county commissioners and staff, we ask you to bless us. The things we'll do today are are things that, uh, we should be doing as county commissioners. We're grateful to live in a free country. We ask you to bless our president and those who are serving in leadership. We ask you to bless, uh, the governor and all of those who are trying to help with the coronavirus. We're grateful for the president of the Navajo Nation. We ask you to bless, uh, all of those who are helping with the pandemic. They will be saved and protected. We're grateful for our staff and our workers and for all of those in emergency services. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to live in this country and this part of, uh, the state of Utah. We ask you to watch over and protect us. The things we do and say today will be in accordance with thy will. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. The opening prayer. Um, next would be the, uh, the reading. Uh, Mr. McDonald, can you just read the proposed agenda?
Okay, I'll go through the whole thing. It's a pretty light agenda. Um, on the consent agenda, you've got the meeting minutes, check registers, and the 2019 through 2023 EPICC San Juan Health Department Amendment Number Four Contract. Uh, under the recognition, recognitions, presentation, and formal items section, you've got an election update, uh, from our clerk auditor, John David Nelson. Uh, under business action, we've got a San Juan County Substance Use and Mental Health Area Plan Approval. That'll be presented by Tammy. Item B, you've got U.S. Board of Geographic Name Request that San Juan County Commission recommend about a proposal to name an arch on the state of Utah Trust Lands in Section 16, uh, comma T32S, comma R19E Salt Lake Meridian, to be named as Stellar Arch. I'll present that. The next item, you've got a cooperative agreement for the Halls Crossing Cal Black Memorial Airport CARES Act Grant between, uh, San Juan County and Air Nautical Operations Division of the State of Utah, Utah Department of Transportation. Next item, you've got Cal Black Memorial Airport Runway Rehabilitation and Lightning Replacement Design Grant Application. Next item after that, you've got Cal Black Memorial Airport U-96 for 55,000 entitlement transfer agreement to Spanish Fork Airport, the Woodhouse Field. And then the final item on your agenda is a resolution recommending and encouraging the Navajo Nation to focus and commit eligible CARES Act funds to improve water, sewer, electrical, and road infrastructure throughout San Juan County portions of the Navajo Nation. That, Commissioner, is your full agenda.
Okay. You're right here, motion. You accept, approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any second? If there's none, I will second the motion. So without any addition or discussion? Um, my uh, comment will be regarding the, uh, uh, United States Board of Ge- Geographic Names. I wanted to see if we can further, uh, do some research uh, to that because I believe the individual, the, uh, entertaining that, uh, is a Colorado resident. And I believe there's, um, probably connection to the local. Even to the fact that the Navajos might have a, a name, have already named that monument. Uh, so I'd like to, uh, express that. Um. And remove that to another date. Extend a, uh, maybe for one month?
So what they're looking for, Commissioner, and we can discuss this further on once we get to that item on the agenda. I think they're looking for the recommendation. Um, right now. We've got all of the information in the packet information. And so I can, I can discuss that a little bit further with you. They submit it back in February. To the U.S. Board of Geographic Names, but if, if it's something that you're not comfortable, we can certainly just send that message that they're recommending nonapproval. So you get three options that they're asking for. Approve the proposed name, reject the proposed name, or consider alternative names. Um, and so if you were to reject it outright, we could also then start the research and to see if, um, whether one of the Native American tribes already has a name for it, things like that. And so but they are kind of looking for that direction from us. But you're absolutely right. It is a gentleman out of Boulder, Colorado, who was, um, hiking and and found that. But I can discuss that more once we approve the agenda.
And additionally to your comments, I believe the, uh, the proposed, uh, arch or the arches system, etc., on satellite land.
It is on satellite land. Yeah, correct.
So, uh, maybe inquiry, inquiry would be, uh, extended to them also?
Yeah, yeah, very free.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and discuss that, right?
Yeah.
Now, this remains. Okay. I'll go ahead and second the motion and there's no change, only comments. So with that, uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
My two ayes, opposed, nay? Not a? Abstain? None? Zero, zero. With that, we'll go to the, back to the agenda. Uh, minutes, I guess the, uh, number two is content. Agenda agreement? Do we need to action on it?
Yeah, so on the consent agenda, you have the meeting minutes, the check registers, and then you have the, the, um, EPICC contract for San Juan Health Department. This is amendment number four. Let me explain this a little to you. Um, this is adding additional funding, uh, of $8,160 uh, to the 1815 federal grant for fiscal year 2021. So the total amount of the contract is now $132,756 and 52 cents. Um, overall, this is kind of the purpose of the grant, the purpose of the overall contract is improving the health of Americans through prevention and management of diabetes and heart disease and stroke. Uh, in the, in the amendment, um, it covers specific, and this is, um, that the acronym EPICC uh, stands for Healthy Living Through Environmental Policy and Improved Clinical Care. Um, and so they have it broken down in specific, um, scopes of works and sections that we can, we can focus on, the Health Department can focus on, but it's to create healthy environments in school settings, uh, local wellness policies, uh, healthy environment in work site settings, uh, media messaging, healthy food access. So there's several different, um, scopes of works that this contract, um, provides. Where this is amendment, we brought it just as a, a consent agenda item. Where they're upping, um, the grant, uh, award amount that we're going to be receiving. And so other than that, that's an explanation of the consent items for your approval.
A very, uh, a motion to, uh, accept. Do we do it in one motion, A, B, and C?
Yeah, you do one motion, A, B, and C.
One at a time?
No, just for the, you're just approving the consent agenda items all at the same time. So one.
Okay, do I hear your motion? For A, B, and C combined?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
A second to the question? There being none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two ayes? Not opposed, not abstaining? Motion carries? Number three, recognizing presentation information item? Uh, Mr. John David Nelson?
Okay. So just wanted to give an update on what's going on, what's happening for this year's presidential primary election, um, which is going to take place the 30th of June. Um, good. Feel like there may, there might be some misinformation that we've, that we've heard about and just want to make, uh, just want to clarify and make sure that everybody is on the same page and, and answering questions that you might have. Um, but I, as you're aware, um, Utah Legislature, uh, passed House Bill 3006, uh, last month. Um, which, which kind of took away for this primary election, early voting and polling locations. Um, it did allow for counties who, who wanted to, to, uh, opt in and do uh, drive-up voting, um, and a few other things. Anyway, that because of a settlement agreement, which the county has with the Navajo Nation, which runs through the end of this year, uh, San Juan County, uh, was exempt from not having early voting and, um, polling locations. So, so we're moving forward, uh, like we have in the past normally, um, having early voting locations and polling locations on Election Day, um, throughout the county. Um, the early voting, it started yesterday down in Monizuma Creek. Um, there will be other, on Wednesday, the next location will be in Bluff and Friday in Monument Valley, and that will continue for the next, uh, four weeks before the, uh, before the primary election on the 30th. But that's just kind of where we're, where we're at and how we're proceeding with, with, with the election. Did you have any questions?
Um, okay, this is only for early voting, right? Which has started yesterday or the day before?
Yesterday.
Okay. Now, the second question is the, uh, the, uh, stipulation in the settlement agreement has been complied with in terms of, um, presentation to be made? To chapter houses? Um, I forget what the specific language was in there. Anyway, periodically? Has that been complied with?
Yes, that there have, our, uh, our liaisons have been on teleconference calls for chapter meetings when, when they've been available to give reports on, on the election, um, a- as we move forward and as, as we work through COVID and, and just updates that way.
I haven't, I've been on, uh, teleconference with the, uh, chapter. And I haven't heard anything from the liaison.
From which chapters?
Pardon?
Which, which chapters?
You don't remember where I'm co- I'm from?
The Navajo Mountain?
I, I, yes, I do. I just didn't know if, if you were speaking of a specific chapter meeting?
That's where the chapter is, those two.
The, uh, chapter. Uh, eh, as far as, you know, uh, our liaison Carl, he, he's reported, um, calling in, I, I believe to the, to the chapter, to the chapter meeting, I, I want to, I believe in, um, Navajo Mountain. Um, I know that he has told me that, you know, JDO, I don't know if they've had chapter meetings, or he hasn't been able to, to contact anyone to, to see if they're having those, but, um, he said that he's been on, um, Navajo Mountain, uh, conference calls, I believe.
I have no idea. I've been on the chapter conference call for a hundred percent.
Okay, if not, then, then I'll reach out to him and, and find out, um, what, what's going on there.
Yeah, okay. Well, um, a lot of times, uh, people's make false statements and, uh, there's no, uh, evidence. Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Eh, any, any other questions? I think that's all I have.
Okay, so what we're looking at is, uh, early voting for beginning of four weeks? And the primary election is on the 30th?
Correct.
Okay. Well, zero in on that. I was, uh, looking forward to when we do vote and, uh, and I hear your liaison has been, uh, doing that in New Mexico, Tulsa. Oh, thank you very much, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Going on, uh, exit items, uh, for me? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, so the next item on your, uh, agenda under 4A is the San Juan County Substance Use and Mental Health Area Plan, uh, Approval. This will be presented by Tammy, and we have Tammy, um, who's online with us right now. Go ahead, Tammy.
Hey, thank you, and thank you for putting me on the agenda, and I hope all commissioners and everybody out there is staying safe through this interesting time. Um, I, you should have the area plan as part of the big packets. It's about, um, 60 pages long. The area plan is something that we have every year because we are the local authority here in San Juan County. It just totally goes through all of the items that we will be doing in the next year. It covers four basic areas: mental health services, substance use disorder services, prevention, and governance and oversight. Like I said, it's about 60 pages. I hope you guys, um, had some time to review it. If you have any questions, I don't know what to really say about it. It hasn't changed too much from the last year. Like I said, it's just our plan of, of, that we're going to get from the legislature and all these different sources and how we think we're going to spend it and what services we're going to provide. Are there any questions on that?
Question? Anyone?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, uh, for this particular program. Is there any Native American doing care under this mental health? Or treatment or problems related to mental health?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, we, we serve the whole county. We have some programs in Monizuma Creek, and we have a program in Mexican Hat also, and we serve people, um, of all races here in the blending office. So, so we serve everybody in the county. That includes all Native Americans.
Any, uh, numbers? Percentage?
Um, I, I don't have those off the top of my head. I could look them up for you and, and send them to you. But I'm, I'm not.
Well, it helps as far as, uh, San Juan County, some of the Native Americans and non-Native Americans, what are the proportion of services rendered?
Okay, yep, I can compile that and send it to you.
Okay. Well, not to share with anybody.
Tammy, this is Commissioner Adams. Um, this service, mental health service that the county provides is available to, um, uh, non-Native Americans, new Native Americans. But Native Americans can also receive a similar type of service from Indian health services. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, Native Americans can seek, or anybody can seek mental health services from wherever they want to seek them. Uh, anybody has that opportunity. Um, Native Americans, they can be seen through IHS, which would be paid for through IHS. I don't know exactly where all the IHS contracts are. So I don't know where they would need to go for that. But yeah, they have that opportunity.
Well, what I'm getting at is Commissioner Gray Eyes' question about how many Native Americans, new Native Americans, people are going to be there. But he's not going to get a full picture unless he gets the members from Indian health services and other Indian services that offer Native Americans, um, those same kinds of services, uh, across the reservation. Am I being accurate or am I being accurate?
No, you're right. Yeah, I can only provide the services and the numbers of, of the ones that we provide. I can't, I can't give you um, how many Native Americans are getting mental health treatment from everywhere. I, I don't know that, and I don't know if anybody could find that answer, but I can give you the numbers of what we are providing.
And all Native Americans are not eligible to receive services from Indian health services, is that correct?
Uh, can you say that again, Commissioner Adams?
Uh, Indian health services only provide service for Native Americans, not non-Native Americans, right?
As, as far as I know, but I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know IHS's policies there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, I know regarding the, uh, IHS policies. Uh, I know the, uh, Utah, Utah National Health System is on the 638. Are they, uh, also providing a the same type of program? Is that the duplication of programs or something like that?
Yes, from what I understand, UNHS is providing some outpatient mental health and substance use disorder treatment. Was that, was that the question?
Yeah, uh, is there duplication of services or do we have that many? Uh, inpatient or outpatient individuals with those, uh, types of conditions?
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess you're kind of breaking up. I didn't understand the question.
I was saying that maybe there's a duplication of services? Or do we have a high number of those types of conditions? That would require two or three programs to address the mental health condition of individuals?
I'm sorry, I guess, I guess I don't understand the the question. I mean.
Number, number one is the question, is there duplication of services?
Um, there might be. Um, UNHS, who is, UNHS, they can provide whatever services they want. There's, there's private providers in the county that are providing the same services that we are. There's some services that we do provide that nobody else does as far as our day treatment services. So yeah, there is, there is some duplic- duplication, but that happens everywhere.
Um, so that puts the question or statement saying we are uh, an agency that is not meeting the number of needed services underserved individuals?
So we are serving Native Americans, like I stated. We have a office in Monizuma Creek that we have a day treatment facility, and we also have a day treatment facility in Mexican Hat. So we are serving anybody that comes in, and we're trying to serve as many as possible.
But, um, you're not extending services to Navajo Mountain? Health services, right?
We are not currently in Navajo Mountain. With the great distance and with our limited resources, it's very, very hard to get out there. And we're looking at different ways to expand. But it, like I said, our, our funding has been constantly, it's been being cut every year, so it's hard to expand services when the funding isn't there, is one piece of it. So it's hard to expand services when the funding isn't there, is one piece of it. And the distances and the small community do make it really hard. This is a spread out county and there's a lot of small pockets that it's really hard to get out to. We've been trying to do a lot more with telemedicine and telehealth to try to get out to the outer reaches as best as we can. And we'll continue to look for ways to do that, to provide services throughout the whole county. That's what we want to do. Sometimes it's just really hard.
Well, so is that true to state? We're still underserved county as far as mental health?
Yeah, I would think that's a true statement.
Okay, good. We can use that to for planning for mental health programs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other question or statement? What kind of action does, do we need? Yeah, it says approval. Is there a motion to approve the plan? Hello?
Bruce, it looks like you're muted. And it looks like we lost Mac.
Oh. I mean...
Yeah, it looks like Bruce and Kirk are still on the call, but we lost Mac and I can only hear you, Commissioner Gray Eyes. Oh, it looks like we lost Bruce. There we go.
Sorry, you lost another one. Did you guys solve their...? Sorry, Commissioner Gray Eyes, we somehow disconnected here. It looks like... Commissioner Gray Eyes, can you hear us? So, Commissioner Gray Eyes, let me see if I can get you... I think we lost Commissioner Gray Eyes, too.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah. I was saying airways must be recoiling after mountain. Commissioner Adams, back on?
Yes, he's back on as well.
Okay, I just wanted to say something before we went to that motion. Commissioner Gray Eyes, I know Tammy doesn't have services out to Navajo Mountain. I don't think she has them in LaSalle. I don't think she has them in Spanish Valley. I don't think she has them in every community in the whole county. But what she does have is she's doing a great job and people are really grateful to have the services. So I'd make a motion that we accept the plan and the budget from the Mental Health Department that's been presented.
I second that, and I concur with the lady is doing an excellent job. Thank you. No more discussion, so others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Absent, none. Motion carries. Two zero zero.
I just wanted to say real quick. Yeah, thank you, commissioners, and thank you for your support. If there is anything you ever need or any questions you have, please feel free to reach out to me. And like I said, thank you for your support. It's very important to have the support that you guys have. Not every county has such commissioners with such good support. So I really do appreciate what you guys do for us.
Okay, I'm not leaving services until these days. Stay tuned. Thank you. Mr. McDonald B.
So item B on your agenda is the U.S. Board of Geographic Names' Requested San Juan County Commission Recommendation About a Proposal to Name an Arch on the State of Utah Trust Lands in Section sixteen T three two S, R nineteen E, Salt Lake Meridian to be named Stellar Arch. This one, we actually received this information from the U.S. Board of Geographic Names. They had, obviously, kind of work you had mentioned. There was a gentleman, the proponent, who was out hiking. The proponent reports that he discovered the arch in 1993 and has been using the name since then. He's not aware of any published record of the arch, including the records of the National Association of Arches and Bridges. The proponent states in his request for the naming that the arch is a perfect crescent horseshoe shape standing on the edge of a colorful sandstone ledge. The views from the arch are spectacular looking northwest towards the Needles District of Canyonlands National Park. The arch was simply named for its stunning beauty and magical presence. It is perfectly formed in an unlikely spot on the Colorado Plateau. And this is a quote from here. "I thought this name Stellar Arch was appropriate." This section of land is located, surrounded by the Butler Wash Wilderness Study Area, managed by the BLM. The BLM has confirmed that this section is not included in that wilderness study area. I reached out to Silla on here. Silla, they don't name any features on their property, but most were named before Silla owned it. And so at least the local office is not aware of a naming request. So it hasn't gone through the Moab Office. And so that's kind of Silla's comments back from it. So the naming, the way that it appears to me, would come from the U.S. Board of Geographic Names. The proposal on here, like I mentioned earlier, is specific to San Juan County Commission, whether or not you approve the proposed name. So it gives you three options: approve the proposed name, reject the proposed name, or consider an alternative name. If you were to consider an alternative name to respond back to them, then I think Commissioner Gray Eyes, kind of like you had mentioned, that's when you would want to actually reach out to the public to see if there are any other names that could be possible for this area or, you know, it may already have another name, you know, whether it's from the tribes or some of the cowboys ranch in this area. There are cows. They may have a specific name for it and it may have just not been officially named. The proposer on here is from somebody out of Boulder, Colorado. Just kind of to give you a little bit more background on that. That's what I got, George's presentation for you on that item.
I'd like to entertain a motion to table this, do some research and background detail information until the next commission meeting. Of the met, so.
It looks to me like it's between Big Basin and Canyonlands National Park, probably accessible by foot traffic, either by horseback or by foot. It's probably not an arch that everybody sees. It's probably an arch that the hikers would probably see. I don't know that there's any road into the area. I don't have any objection personally, but if we want to table it for some reason, I'll make a motion that we table it.
Was that... Do you second my motion, Mr. Adams?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm table and note, no discussion, no questions. So others in favor, say aye. Aye, also. With that, no abstention. So motion carries, two zero. Next is the Cooperative Agreement. House Crossing. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, this is the Cooperative Agreement for the House Crossing Cal Black Memorial Airport CARES Act Grant between San Juan County and the Aeronautical Operations Division of the State of Utah, Utah Department of Transportation. About a month ago, maybe a little over a month ago, we received notice that we'd been awarded through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, so the CARES Act, that we had been awarded $20,000 that could be used for operation and maintenance at the Cal Memorial Airport. We had submitted all the information to the FAA for that grant, including the grant application. The funds for that are administered to the State of Utah and the county doesn't have an agreement with the State of Utah Aeronautical Operations Division for that. And so we have to enter into this cooperative agency agreement so that the money can be passed through to the State of Utah, go into the State Treasurer, and then the funds will then be sent to the county after that. Also, we would then report back our expenditures, expenses, provide receipts and documentation back to the State of Utah in behalf of the FAA. And so it's a pass-through. The money is kind of a pass-through situation, but we had to have this agreement in place so that they could then pass the money to us.
Okay. I'd like to, if allowable, invest $20,000 into that title somewhere. So in terms of how much we're agreeing to.
Yeah, so the agreement is pretty much just a pass-through of any funds. We have already, in your last commission meeting, executed the agreements for the specific $20,000 on there. And so this agreement is, the state's not giving us the funds. All the state is acting as kind of the intermediary that provides the funds from FAA to us. And so it's kind of just a pass-through. And in the document is specifically states, you know, that the FAA is going to deposit the funds into the State Treasurer and then the State Treasurer then deposits funds into our accounts. But really, kind of the oversight comes from the State of Utah. So that's kind of all that this is, is just a document that secures the transferability of those funds from one entity to the other entity. No specific amount. This could be also for future funding amounts as well.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept and sign the cooperative agency agreement.
Okay, I second the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, none? Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two ayes. Any opposed? None? Motion carries? Thank you. That should be the Airport Runway Rehab and Lighting Replacement. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, so this one is the Cal Black Memorial Airport Runway Rehabilitation and Lighting Replacement Design Grant Application. So we've had JAVIATION, who's been working with us all along. They're our contracted manager to assist us through this process. They provided cost estimates. And if you remember, in the last commission meeting, we had announced that we were awarded up to $400,000 in design grant. And JAVIATION, through this project, which is the Airport Runway Rehabilitation and Lighting Replacement Project, they have estimated that the design would be up to $240,000. And so what you see before you is the grant application for that, for that funding. And included in it, and I wanted to make sure that we just had kind of a brief discussion and at least let you know, so you can put this on the back burner in your memory bank. They provided in the grant kind of a cost estimation of what the project would cost right now. So realize that we haven't even had a design yet. JAVIATION has provided an estimate of what they feel that it would take to do the project. So the project, that total cost on here is $4,672,872,000. So it's quite a big project, quite a big undertaking. The design and everything, that $240,000 may adjust a little. We're trying to get the construction management included in here. So if you look on the total cost of construction, a portion of the cost was construction management of $402,000. This year, the FAA has approved the design in these projects up to that $400,000 mark. And everything is funded, 100% through the FAA. And so we're trying to make sure that we get as much included in this grant to meet $400,000 that we've been told that we've been awarded so that we don't have as much money in a local match. So on the project, if you were to take the project as this kind of standalone and these costs were true, we would have to come up with 5% of these costs. So 5% of the total cost would be $233,643. And so tuck that away in your memory bank because we're going to have to, in next year's budget, divide that amount of money for our local match. So the local match is 5% from the county, another 5% from the state, and then the FAA would fund the rest. We do have entitlement funds that will be going towards this project. So far in entitlement funds, we have $700,000. So far in entitlement funds, we have, uh, $700,000 banked in entitlement funds. So what the entitlement funds are is each year, uh, we're, we receive $150,000 from the FAA that is, that is entitlement funds that they bank until you have a project. So so far we have 700,000 of those entitlement funds that are available, uh, which would go towards this project. And then the FAA, uh, funds the rest on top of the entitlement funds. But there is this local match that we would have to come up with, uh, to make sure that we are maintaining and rehabilitating, uh, that surface and, and the lights, uh, at that airport. Let me see if there's anything else that I can think of to touch on really. So you may see, uh, so what I'm asking for today is approval of the grant application for only the design. Uh, as we go through the design process, there's a 20% contingency in here that JAVIATION has put towards the project. So 20% of that cost about $669, $669,000, sorry. That contingency may go away and, and become more of a normal contingency. They stuck the contingency at 20% so that make sure that they get the appropriate amount for design funds. But as they go through and we look at the design, a lot of these costs may come down in total, uh, for the estimate. It's kind of a, what I would call a 20,000 foot level estimate. Once we get through the design, we'll be able to narrow these numbers down. But they anticipate that that, that's a pretty high, um, contingency amount that we'd be able to reduce. And then if we can get construction management tied into the 100% funding this year, that'll help reduce the costs as well for the overall project, which shouldn't entail next year, us having to put, uh, less funds to the project. But overall, that's kind of what this grant application represents is that whole entire process. Hopefully that's clear as mud. If you have any questions, let me know.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the application for federal assistance at the Cal Black Airport.
Second motion. Any question? Comment? There have been none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Opposed. Nay. There's none, others in favor, it's two and no opposition. Thank you. Next would be $55,000 transfer.
Okay, correct. So the Cal Black. Item E, Cal Black Memorial Airport ES96 for $55,000 entitlement agreement. Spanish Fork Airport, Woodhouse Field. The, as I spoke about the entitlement, so we have $700,000 in entitlement funds that are sitting there at the FAA that can be used for specific projects. Those entitlement funds can be transferred and borrowed to other airports. And so this year, uh, Spanish Fork needs additional, uh, entitlement funds. Now, they've, they've made a request to the state of Utah and through the Federal Aviation Administration, um, to seek if, see if there's anybody out there willing, uh, to designate or transfer some of those entitlement funds to this airport and the project that they have going. This is something that airports do quite frequently. It's also something that we can do in the future. And what we do is, is we transfer those entitlement funds to different airports. The agreement is that in the future, their entitlement funds, now remind you, we, we receive $150,000 each year and we're only asking to transfer 55,000. But if those other airports, if, if Spanish Fork Airport receives that 150,000 as well, they will be able to in the future for their entitlement funds, transfer those funds back to us. So it's like we're loaning them the entitlement funds. They'll pay it back through their entitlement funds in future years once their project's completed. Where we don't need the entitlement funds this year, you know, it completely makes sense for us to transfer what they need. And then in future years, we'll also be able to go out and request entitlement funds from other airports who aren't using them on active projects. And so this is just kind of, um, horse trading, but you'll get the horse back in the end. But it's also funds that, that at our discretion, we, we don't get to use. It has to be an FAA project, um, that we use the funds on. So they just send in a federal piggy bank until you have a project, uh, that can use the, the funds themselves. They also mentioned as speaking with FAA that it's good to transfer these out because then you get an updated year. So we're transferring 55,000 fiscal year 2019, but we'll get back, um, entitlement funds that'll be titled under a, a fiscal year of 2020 or 2021, which is actually better for us because you can only hold on to entitlement funds for so many years before the FAA takes them back from you for not doing a project. And so this actually helps refreshing our funds that, that are in that FAA piggy bank for us. You have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the transfer?
I make a motion to, uh, approve the transfer, transfer $55,000 to the Spanish Fork project, uh, as, as has been explained.
Okay. Second motion, question. Are you talking about horse trading? Do we get back the, the same condition horse that we traded?
Same height, same growth on the teeth. And so, yeah, we'll get, we'll get $55,000 back. But the good part is, is it comes back instead of fiscal year 2019 funding, it'll come back as a fiscal year, uh, 2020 or 2021, which actually helps that, um, helps that entitlement fund account.
We're trading and we will get back a well-trained, well-behaved horse.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. That's the, uh, condition, others in favor?
Aye.
You know, comments or statements? There have been none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Uh, any names? There have been none, two in favor, zero opposed. Most of the past. Mister, um, Mister McDonald, go to F.
Okay. Item F on here is a resolution recommending and encouraging the Navajo Nation to focus and commit eligible CARES Act funds to improving water, sewer, electric, electrical and road infrastructure throughout the San Juan County, Utah portions of the Navajo Nation. Uh, it's my understanding that the Navajo Nation Council has passed, um, the act at the special session, um, regarding of where to allocate more than 600 million in federal, um, CARES Act funding. However, President Nez has not signed, uh, the act that they had passed. But instead of kind of what he's doing, as well as vice president, um, is going through and kind of creating their own prioritization or their own, um, allocation of that $600 million. And so do we just want to put this resolution before them so that they recognize that there are, um, chapters within San Juan County, uh, that we would like them to focus on? You know, specific projects that we put out there that we've been working on with him in the past is, um, the road from Aljado to Navajo Mountain. That's one of them, as well as that, the economic, uh, opportunity that that would provide in the opportunity zone. So we want to just remind them of that as well as the need for infrastructure throughout, um, the chapters on the Navajo Nation here in San Juan County, uh, the lack of, of water, uh, the lack of electricity to homes, things like that. So we just wanted to put this resolution before them to, to remind the president, uh, to, to look our way. That's kind of just a brief explanation of what the resolution represents.
Okay. Thank you. Like to go ahead and entertain a motion to, uh, approve the resolution. It would be, uh, over Nez.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the resolution, uh, asking Navajo Nation to allocate an appropriate amount of the 600 million towards the Utah chapters.
Okay. I'll second the motion. So comment, um, in terms of the recent, uh, communication from the office of the president and vice president, as stated by Mister McDonald, uh, Mister President and his vice president has a different, um, priorities, mainly regarding, uh, water, lack of water under Navajo Nation, running water under Navajo Nation. So he asked us, um, in Navajo land or non-san chapter to see how many water projects that we're looking at. And we put in four. And this morning I sent in the, uh, another one, which is the, uh, proposed, uh, water line between the, uh, Ojito and Pai Mesa, South Community of, uh, Non-San Community. So in that sense, um, we did submit those. I'd like to see this pass also, uh, with those, uh, motion second. You are hearing any further comments?
No.
If not, then we'll go ahead and, uh, call for the question, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Opposed. Nay. There have been none, others, uh, motion has passed, two in favor, zero opposed. Thank you very much, uh, Mister Adams, Mister McDonald, and the rep of the county administration. I believe that the confusion of all items, uh, necessary for the commissioned action. Now, and I'd like to, uh, reference your notice, uh, regarding the, um, what is it? The communication tools, the lack of it or the failure of server, computer server and such, Mister McDonald.
Yeah, correct. Uh, so the email that I sent you last night regarding that, the $8,000, um, need for, for that server, that server, kind of as I explained in the email, um, the server would host, uh, the coins software, which, um, the surveyor, well, not the survey, the assessors, uh, the recorders, the treasurer, as well as clerk auditors use throughout the counties. Uh, our, our server here, it's not really a server. It's a, a laptop computer that they've had in the past with server software on it. Um, as the company that owns coins upgraded their coins programming, it knocked it off of our service. Our servers, the laptop is no longer compatible with that software. And this is software that we need, uh, in order to, um, do our recordings and assessments for the county. And so it's kind of a, a vital function in the recorder's office. And, uh, we, we've kind of been watching the server degrade throughout years, what I'm told. Uh, but now it's, it's, we're kind of stuck and need to do something. And so I presented that to you in email form, um, but if you have any question.
Question A, uh, I thought there's a sort of emergency type of, uh, item that need to be, uh, acted on now. Due to possibility of losing the data, possibility of, uh, contention on that loss of data would precipitate legal actions from individuals, uh, without having the appropriate, uh, uh, balance sheet or expenditure report or whatnot. So in that sense, uh, what is your recommendation? Is there room to, uh, do we need a public hearing or do we need a, an emergency basis? I believe there's a clause in there that we can consider an item on those conditions. Mister McDonald.
Yeah, so on our purchasing policy, we've allowed, you allowed the county administrator, um, to purchase items, uh, at like this. Just go ahead, but I, I wanted to make sure you were aware of it before purchasing it. When you look at our budgets overall, our next, we're hoping our next commission meeting we'll be able to have a public hearing, uh, and make our budget adjustments. So we've been meeting internally with all the department heads going through our budgets and, uh, pulling money where we can. Uh, and so we'll have that in, in a public meeting for you to make those, uh, allocation adjustments and to approve those recommended changes in a budget. And as we look at some of the changes, now we're just, we're trying to, to free up money and create more savings. And then we have these emergency expenses that come up. And so we, through taking some of that money, will be able to cover the costs. That's true. We'll just have to make an abus, budget adjustment. Typically in the past, what the county has done here is saved all of these adjustments. They let the departments go ahead and spend the money, go into the negative in those line items, and then at the end of the year, they would make the budget adjustments to allocate funds from other resources so that those, those funds were trued up and in the positive instead of the negative. Uh, in this case, we're letting you know, uh, earlier and we'll make those adjustments frequent, more frequent throughout the year so that there's not this huge adjustment at the end of the year, but that we're making the adjustments throughout the year so that our budgets work more of a, a breathing budget. If you need the funds, then we can pull them where the funds are available. So in this circumstance, there are funds that we're working with the recorder and the recorder's office has been willing to give up out of other line items in his budget, uh, that will be able to make up predominantly for these funds. But where the, the system is also shared with the treasurer's office, um, the assessor's office, as we go through and look at those budgets, then we'll be able to pull those, those monies there. So it's not like we don't have the money, but it is an emergency purchase that was not anticipated in the approved budget. We will have to make those budget adjustments, recognizing the fact that there was this emergency purchase, uh, that will be, um, sitting in the IT, uh, department account that will put his budget over the amount that was approved.
Okay. So we can wait another two weeks?
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, on the server purchase, no, we would need to purchase that right away. We've been, I've been holding it off, trying to explore other items, and it just keeps getting worse and worse for us. And it just keeps getting worse and worse for us.
My question is, do we need to approve anything right away?
No.
In that case, I would have to recall the agenda and do the under action item and go ahead and approve it. That would be, the question will fall on the public hearing section.
Yeah, we'll have that next meeting.
Okay. So with that said, I believe we have concluded our agenda. What is the next item to consider?
I'd like to make a report if it's okay, Willie.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Adams.
I've been involved with the Farm Bureau over the last couple of weeks. They had a project called Farmers Feeding Utah, where Farm Bureau would purchase lambs and flour and other goods from farmers and then donate them to Navajo Nation people. And I'm sure you're aware of this, last Saturday or Sunday night, they brought in a semi-load of 300 lambs and wanted to let them out and rest here at the county fairgrounds. So I met them here on Sunday night and we unloaded the sheep and put them in different pens where they had clean water. And then they trucked them out yesterday morning and delivered them to Halchita, Ojito and Navajo Mountain the previous week. They did a similar project down at, close to Monizuma Creek, where they had another 300 sheep that they delivered along with bluebird flour and a lot of other items. I just think it would be appropriate if San Juan County would write a letter to the Utah Farm Bureau, Ron Gibson, and thank them for this effort for San Juan County residents. Because I know that it was, it was so gratefully received and humbly received by the people of the Navajo Nation throughout our county. And I think it was a great project.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and add to their comment. As county commissioner for District Two, we did receive 50 heads of sheep yesterday at Navajo Mountain, Nausa Community. And out of that, while I was there, 45 were taken by local residents, San Juan County, Utah. And there were 15 others that were left. And I was surprised to see Senator Higgins at their corral. So appreciate his presence there. And the other thing is, we had John Ackbar out and Mike Muller, both of them from the office of the governor, and also from Indian affair with Dusty Jensen. So three gentlemen, plus Mr. Higgins, that almost accounts for a good meeting. Appreciate the expression that was taken. I believe that it was under the umbrella of a nonpartisan organization who is run by Rebecca Benalit, former commissioner for San Juan County, and also a young lady from Pai Mesa, Ella Mae Jim, who is a teacher at the Modern Valley High School, San Juan County. So those are the, at this time, I believe, we're being confronted with questions. Why, why are the Utah only receiving those services? So I said, well, it's, I don't know the agreements. There are, if there is any, that were made between the nonpartisan organization, the Farm Bureau, Department of Agriculture, or the State of Utah. So those gentlemen were present. So I believe there was some involvement from the office of the governor. So I have no other underlying communication regarding, so we just appreciate that. So I just stated to the, in my statement, texting back to them and say, hey, we can't just argue the fact that Utah residents are receiving all these goods now. The other hand is, why don't we just take an action and work with the State of Arizona, Charleston, Department of Farm Bureau, and also Department of Agriculture to do the same, provide the same services for the Coconino and Navajo County, State of Arizona. So that hopefully puts the cross to the question and also provides an opportunity to forward ahead and provide, approach the appropriate agency and entities for those types of services. So in that sense, I'd like to express my appreciation to the, to whoever was involved, all those that have been involved providing service. I know we did provide some services to Arizona, to other connections. And we're doing the same thing, hopefully, in the future, in the near future. So we are, I know if a nonpartisan organization does put in certain provision to the local community, I don't think it would be involving the, as far as I can say, the elected officials are not the one to be defining what and who to be served. So I'd like to clear up that and say to the communities, yes, we did receive service and appreciate that very much. So that the extent of my reporting, so, and I was also encountered. So it's just happened that we are in two states, three counties. I guess it would be four states, three counties. And so, thank you, gentlemen. It's out of my statement and report. So, can we have any other items to consider, Mr. McDonald?
No.
So we are at the end.
Just need a motion to dismiss.
To pause for the gentleman? Mr. Adams' motion to return, I second it. Time now is 12:21.